A word of my unfailing love, for I have put my trust in you. Show me the way I should go for to you I entrust my life. So Father, this morning as we come to you, we just, we give you that, that trust. We turn to you for guidance. Today we'd ask that you protect each of us, guide and direct this meeting. And Father, as we, as we join at this table, you'll notice that there are a couple not here. We'd ask for traveling mercies for, for Commissioner Clifford. We'd ask for healing for our, our fellow Commissioner Larry Jones. So we just give you thanks today for all of that in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen.
Chair comments, I don't have many other than we do have vacancies here and we'd ask for everybody being in a prayerful attitude for Commissioner Larry Jones who had a, a little misfortune Friday and, and is presently recovering in a hospital. We're encouraged by the word that he's recovering, so that, that's good. And with that, what we have before us today is an interesting meeting, signs of progress, I believe. So with that, I'll, I'll end my chair comments and turn to the consent agenda and I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve the items on the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Have a motion second without discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
That is a motion passed. And then the approval of our regular agenda, do we need to add anything, Mr. Administrator?
No, not that I'm aware of.
Okay. I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the agenda.
Second.
A motion to second and all those in favor say aye. Aye. The agenda is approved. Public comment, we don't have a lot of public out here, but anyone want to address anything? This looks like a familiar face behind a mask. So hi Kelly, I think it's Kelly. The floor is yours.
Good morning, gentlemen. I will address you as the Board of Public Health. You all received the same communication I did from a concerned citizen. And I will just tell you that Livwell is not the board, we are not public health. Your board, your, uh, Fannie County Health Department is the public health. However, we work hand in hand with Fannie County Health Department and Sandy and Dana have done a great job. We enjoy working with them. Livwell facilitates and every other week with, um, health agencies on train, with working on COVID stuff, um, and getting testing out in our community. We have a testing grant as I communicated with you all last week. And we joined the Garden City Chamber of Commerce to be able to get information in the hands of businesses. We have been working very hard over the last year as trying to get information out on testing. That is what we have been doing. And I wanted to get in front of you all today to see with that communication we received last week if you had any questions of us.
Okay. Questions, comment? Thank you.
Absolutely.
Any other public comment? Hearing none. At this time, are we ready to move into our agenda items? We have a business item up first, a resolution twenty-two dash twenty twenty-one to establish a TIF district. I don't know who all is going to address this. I, I see Lana here ready to, to go. So Lana, turn to you.
Good morning. Yeah, I'm happy to kick this off. We do have, um, Mr. Hannigan, Dr. Hannigan is on Zoom with us. He unfortunately got stranded out of state. He intended to be here this morning, um, but he is available virtually. And we also have, um, his attorney from Poulsenelli, um, on the line to answer any questions you may have. The memo should have explained pretty, everything pretty well. Um, tax increment finance districts in the state of Kansas, the county isn't actually allowed to establish those. Um, you authorize the establishment of it, but the city of Garden City actually will establish the district if you will. So we, we've provided that information, um, in your packet and we've, we've provided you with the resolution that's required for you to pass, um, saying basically that you authorize the city of Garden City, um, to establish that TIF district. So, um, tax increment finance district, it's been a little bit since we've done one of these, um, within the community. Um, but this is, uh, very similar to what we did at Schulman Crossing. Um, it's just an opportunity to help the developer pay for the infrastructure. And this is, as you are aware, this is currently just a bare piece of agricultural ground. And, um, we will have to have significant expense, uh, associated with getting all of the utilities in place, uh, roads, um, you know, runoff, water runoff, all of those things cost quite a bit of money. So, and the, the tax increment finance district is just an opportunity to help that developer to, to meet some of those costs. As you guys are aware, we have seen and continue to see substantial growth across the county and we simply don't have, um, a lot of commercial and light industrial lots available, um, for folks who are looking, whether they're, you know, locals who are looking to move to, to larger locations, or when they're out of town, uh, companies who are looking to move in, we struggle with finding locations to, to welcome them to. So happy to answer any questions. Like I said, Dr. Hannigan is on the line. Um, so if you have questions for him, he's happy to answer them. Again, his attorney is on the line. And if there's anything technical about, um, the TIF itself, either Steve or myself are happy to answer that as well.
Good morning, Dr. Tim. You, I believe your sound's muted. There he is.
Good morning, everyone. I appreciate your time and I wish I could have been there with you in person.
We're, uh, we're missing your face in person also, but it's good to see you on, on the screen. Can you answer a couple of questions here as we get started? Uh, if this is all approved, how soon do you see construction starting?
The engineering is slated to be finished right at the first of the year. Um, the, um, engineering firm that put out for bids for the contractors, um, we believe we could actually start breaking ground, um, in the spring.
Okay.
We hope to have, uh, streets and lots developed to the point where they would be on the market by fall of next year.
Okay. Doctor, the, uh, the second question I have, and I'll use this, uh, uh, figure that I'm going to try to solicit from you and use it in future conversations. Do you know the amount of dollars that Fannie County collects today on the piece of ag land that you're wanting to convert? Do you know that Lana?
Uh, that's in your resolution. You have your, uh...
Yeah, I wanted to, I wanted to throw red into the record here for the public.
Oh. The, the property taxes collected on it?
Property tax the county receives.
Yeah.
It, it's, it's part of the package here.
Yeah.
The, the reason I bring that up is Schulman Crossing, number one, was the first TIF district, I believe, in this county. And what the county for, decided to allow to go away was property tax on a piece, on an alfalfa field out there in the amount of seven hundred and thirty-seven dollars.
Yeah.
I'll never forget the amount.
(laughing)
And replace that with the sales tax from Menards. And, and so that's why I'm asking you for these, these figures when the public turns and says, hey, you're, you're showing favoritism here. I want to show the public what, what the benefit is back to the county.
And Steve's pulling that out of the packet.
Steve's digging and looking. So with that, I'll, I'll be quiet for a bit. We'll have more questions, but I'll turn, I see Lana's asking one of you.
Well, Mr. Chairman, uh, and Tim, good to see you this morning. Uh, mine is, is this all with regard to housing? And I'm looking at Lana and Tim, or if, because I heard in Lana's comments, uh, commercial development, manufacturing and so forth, or?
Right.
Uh, and, and I'm not trying to get into all the specifics, but...
No, you're fine.
I heard Tim talk about streets and things, or is this commercial manufacturing only?
Yeah, this is commercial and light industrial. Um, yeah, so the tax increment finance tool is only usable. Um, in that way, there's, you can do a housing TIF in Kansas, but it's, it's pretty challenging. The RHID is actually the tool we use most often when we're, when we're working on housing. But the tax increment finance district, um, is really usable and, and most productive on a commercial industrial. Um, so again, this won't be heavy industrial. Um, it'll be, you know, if you kind of envision it, the, the portions that are up against the highway will be commercial, uh, and then behind that will be some light industrial. So a lot of the things, again, that we get requests for, um, you know, truck repair shops and tire shops and those kinds of things, that's what we're hoping to be able to place.
Well, I, I, I thought that was the case, but in kind of in the spirit of what the chairman was asking, uh, for public record and for people who are watching online, I don't know if we have people this morning, but, uh, I just think in the spirit of full disclosure and transparency, we need to help, uh, the people understand.
Absolutely.
Thank you for that.
Yep, we would agree with that.
Anything else from your standpoint, Tim?
Uh, no, I, I, you know, one of the things that, um, struck me about this location is, um, that intersection between eighty-three and fifty, uh, gets as much or more truck traffic than portions of Interstate seventy in the western part of the state. So I think that, I think the market will show that we have a real opportunity to capture, um, semi-truck related businesses, um, light industrial that need access, you know, to a highway in short order. Um, I do think that the portion of the, of the ground facing Highway fifty, um, might be attractive to fast food restaurants or anyone else that needs that kind of high visibility. Um, we are at this point, I, I believe, pretty short of, of, you know, significant larger lots, ten acre lots that can be used, um, by a local business or incoming business for ag related, um, retail or for trucking related, um, business.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
The other...
Oh, go ahead.
Sorry. The thing I might as well just highlight now, you know, I, I've been in the community twenty years. I, I moved here with nothing but a lot of student debt and a U-Haul. Um, I've vested in the community for over twenty years. And this development company is, is, I started it about ten years ago. All of it, all of my development has been in Fannie County. Um, I've tried to be real deliberate and careful as I've grown my company, um, not try, try not to get too far out over my skis, but, you know, as I come towards the last part of my career straightened teeth, this development is what I want to do. And Fannie County is where I want to do it.
And we truly appreciate that and giving back to your community. I, I share in that spirit, uh, for sure. Yep.
Hang on just a minute, uh...
No, I'm done. I'm, that's all I had. That's all I had.
Steve, do you have that figure?
Okay, the property, the base assessed valuation, which will always pay taxes on that base amount, is about twenty-one thousand dollars. Counties forty-five, or forty-five mills would generate you nine hundred dollars a year.
Nine hundred dollars. So for those who say, hey, you didn't do your due diligence, and I heard that before, our due diligence is by statute, we are to answer the question, does this have, have adverse financial repercussions against the county? And if not, then as I read the statute, we ought to support it. So that's why I asked for that figure. So, okay, Duane, do you have something?
Uh, Lana, I just simply ask you to explain to the public a little bit about, you know, the counties can't do a TIF. And we're having great cooperation with our city partners to help us through this. Can you talk to that issue so the public understands it?
Sure. So that, just the way that, that, that the law is written in Kansas, um, the city has to make the determination, if you will, that the property is either blighted or, um, not producing as much as it could, basically, is, is what they're looking at. So, um, we go to the city commission tomorrow, um, to get them to weigh in on that, but the idea being, again, as, as Commissioner Jones has, has brought up, is this the best use for this property? And so obviously with this property being on the intersection of a very highly trafficked, um, highway interchange, we would believe that it has a higher value than just what it's being currently used for. So one thing I would remind you on a, on a TIF though, um, you know, one of the questions we had, especially if you guys remember Schulman, one of the questions was, how come those businesses don't have to pay property tax? I had to pay property tax. The businesses will pay property tax. So, um, just as a reminder, the only difference is that instead of the county taking all of the funds upfront for that increment in, in property tax, you're authorizing a portion of that for eligible expenses, which is just infrastructure. You can't build any buildings with a TIF. You can only do streets and water and sewer and electric and light poles and fences, those types of things. Infrastructure can be paid for, but what you're doing is basically just foregoing, um, giving yourselves a little bit of time and giving up some of those revenues in the short term, knowing that you have other, excuse me, you'll have other, uh, benefits to having the development in place. Again, Schulman Crossing is probably one of the best examples anywhere in the state for how those can work because the sales tax component of that has been so significant for the community, both for the county and for the city of Garden City's general funds. But this, while it won't probably have that same impact as far as sales tax goes, um, it will still have significant improvement. And in the long term, will definitely contribute more to the property tax base than what you're currently getting on a piece of ag land.
Thank you. That's what, I appreciate what you're, you're saying there. That gets the information out to our public.
Yeah, absolutely. Absolutely. Yeah, we, we like to educate. We want to make sure people understand, again, everybody's paying taxes in this situation. Um, we're just utilizing some of those tax dollars to pay for infrastructure.
And it's directed to the city.
Yeah, well, and another reminder on that. So, and there are communities, and, and we've all heard of the bridge to nowhere, right? Um, there are communities who choose to build out infrastructure on their dime and then hope that we're able to, to backfill that with projects. We've chosen, as, as a community, we've chosen over the last many, many years, and that we would prefer to partner with private development and let them take that risk versus the community taking that risk. So instead of us building roads and, and laying out lots the way we think they might sell, um, basically on the back of the taxpayers, and what we're doing instead is saying, no, we have a private developer who's interested in doing this for us, let's work with them and give them the tools they need to make it happen.
Tim, I see you on, on my screen, an attorney by the name of Kevin Lee. Looks like maybe he wants to say something, so let's give him an opportunity. Counsel?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Kevin Lee, Poulsenelli Law Firm, period this morning on behalf of Westbury, Kansas Corridor LLC. I think Lana and the staff report did a great job outlining the, the specific request that we have before you this morning. Really view this as, as the first of, of many steps and bring it forward what we think will, will be a great project, uh, for Fannie County. Um, and, and as was noted, the, the Kansas TIF statute gives that authority exclusively to cities, um, but they can establish it in districts inclusive of, inclusive of property fully outside the city limits, um, with county consent. So that's really what brings us here this morning. Um, this is at, at this point, just adopted a resolution to, to call a public hearing, um, that, that year itself will be held in, in December. So, um, happy to answer whatever questions you have today, certainly if others come up between now and the year, um, then we, we'd be happy to address those at, at that time.
Okay, I called on you because, uh, sitting here in our midst is our county council and our... and our county administrator. Do you, either of you have anything that needs clarification?
No, honestly, the, the email exchanges that laid this out for everyone, I think were very well done. And so I don't have anything to add.
We're good to go and consider a resolution. Is that correct? Is there anything else, Lana, that you'd like to add before we take up a, a motion?
No, just, I would just say, this is, this is very exciting. This is the first project of this type that we've done in the county. And, and so I know it's a big step for us to take, but I think, you know, we all know, we just talked about housing a couple of weeks ago with our housing study being completed. We're going to see more and more projects, development projects happening outside of the incorporated areas. And so we need you to be excited about that. We need you to stay on board with that. But certainly when you have questions, we want to answer those. We want to be as transparent as we can. And so that you guys are a real partner in the development and, again, can share in the enthusiasm of being a part of the growth of our great region.
Okay, thank you, Lana. Before you offer that motion, the, back to Tim for just a minute. Ti- Tim, are you there?
Tim.
I, I want to invite you to our coffee shop, where I have coffee with some experts. And they have this project figured out, and that that truck stop's the first thing going up, and it's going to start soon, so they can, they can patronize the tetry in there.
Well, I'll be sure to put that on the prospectus for any, for the actual truck stops, looking at that location.
It's amazing what you don't know as a developer that you know. So anyway, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move reapprove Resolution twenty-two dash twenty-twenty-one to establish this TIF district.
Second?
Have a motion second. Is there any further discussion? Any input from anybody before we vote?
Not discussion, but again, I just want to applaud Tim and, and others locally who are putting money back into the community and are trying to continue development within our community. I just think it's outstanding that we have that type of interest and, and investment.
We can all agree to that. You bet. Thanks, Lon. Okay, all those in favor of the motion as is presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed? Get on with your project there, Tim. We, we do whatever we can to help you.
I appreciate your support, and I look forward to actually being there in person the next time around. And I, I will be in there for some coffee. What's the, what's the protocol on who pays for that?
In this case, a developer.
Some people we ask to bring homemade chocolate chip cookies, but, but you don't quite look like a cookie maker, so just, just show up.
And Tim, you need to understand, there are two other coffee rooms. Duane's is at five-thirty, mine's at six-thirty in the morning, so, you know. And there are different methods of payment at each of those.
All right. Thanks, guys. Best of luck to you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lana. Okay. Sale of real property. Linda, this is your chance. You want to dress up from there? You may, or you can?
Well, I'll, I'll come in. I just want to make sure we get, sorry, I'll get to the microphone as I should. These two pieces of property, individuals have inquired about purchase of them. I, so we are putting them up for sale to facilitate that. But I do want to make a quick amendment, because I left out the letter B on the Burnside property. So it should read five-one-zero Burnside, number twenty-two B. Number twenty-two is actually a different piece of property, so I apologize for that omission, but I'd like to correct that before we vote on it.
Finney County own half of that mobile home where the line goes right through it? I mean, this, this is indicative of the mess we have down there in terms of surveys and lots and plots and so on. So I don't know how we ever straighten it out, so.
That, that should be someone's lifelong project, but I don't believe it's going to be mine.
Okay. So we have them, we have an offer on that.
That resolution number will be twenty, twenty-twenty-one. And we, I can get copies up here before the end of the meeting.
Yeah, and just, just to flesh that out again, to make sure the public understands, we are putting these up for bids. This will be published in the newspaper, just as we did with our previous sale of property in the spring.
Okay. Need, any questions, discussion, comment, or do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve Resolution twenty-dash twenty-twenty-one to sale, authorize sale of county-owned property, or of real estate.
Okay. Second?
I'll second.
Motion second. All those in favor say aye. Aye, those opposed? That passes. Is there, the one, there a second piece of property that, a little triangle that?
They're both.
Oh, I apologize. Those are both in the same resolution. Yes, the second piece of property is three-zero-zero-eight Mary. I wrote down that address correctly, so I didn't need to talk about it. But yeah, that, that triangle piece of property is also up for sale. We did have an individual inquire about purchase of that property. And so we are putting that up for bids.
I'm not quite sure what, what its value is, but it maybe has some?
Um, yeah, I can, I can give you those for, let's see, for three-zero-zero-eight Mary, that triangle piece of property, the appra, it's, the appraised value through the appraiser's office is eight thousand four hundred forty dollars.
All right, we'll see what happens. So that is also included in the same resolution?
Correct.
So we're good to go on to the next item on our agenda? And it says at nine AM, so we need to wait about three minutes here, right? Or is it okay to proceed? We'll proceed. We have our person here. Would you want to come toward the microphone, please, and I'll announce what's, this is a refunding bond sale resolution. Brett Shogren.
It is this morning. How you doing, Brett?
Good. How are you?
Yeah, great.
Thank you, ma'am. While she's passing those around, good morning.
Morning.
My name is Brett Shogren, with Stiefel Nicholas and Company, formerly George K. Baum and Company. Some of you may remember, I was here back in two thousand seventeen when you were doing your energy lease?
HVAC.
Yeah, HVAC lease. I was here with Roger Edgar. Roger Edgar has since retired. And a little over two years ago, Stiefel purchased or acquired the public finance portion of George K. Baum and Company. So that's why I'm here, under the Stiefel name, now part of a bigger organization that can provide much better service to the county. And we do a lot of bond issues, a lot of lease financings throughout the state. As I think Mr. Reese presented to you a week or two ago, there's an opportunity to refund or refinance your Series A two thousand two general obligation bond. I believe it's a sewer bond for a sewer district. That was purchased by USDA. It was a forty-year bond. And so we're about twenty years into that. It was purchased at a interest rate of four-point-seven-five percent, which was probably a great interest rate back in two thousand two. But interest rates are now much lower. They're actually very close. They're a little bit higher than historically low levels. But they are very near historically low levels, which is advantageous when you are issuing bonds. This report, you may have seen this before, but the first page is the sources and uses. Probably page four is what you'd be more interested in. What we'd be doing is issuing general obligation bonds, tax-exempt general obligation bonds, to pay off the USDA bond from two thousand two. So we'd just be issuing new, lower interest debt to pay off higher interest debt. That's, it's pretty simple. But we'd be lowering the payments. I kind of highlighted the annual savings portion there. In this scenario, based on what our trading desk feels we could market the bonds at, we could save between five and nine thousand dollars per year. That's reduced principal and interest payments to the county. Total savings is estimating at, estimated at just over a hundred and forty-three thousand dollars. We look at present value savings when we look at analyzing a refunding transaction. Present value, if you're not familiar with it, is the value of future dollars correlated to today's market. Basically, how many, how many dollars we'd need to, today to invest to get to that a hundred and forty-three thousand dollars. And the present value savings is estimated at a hundred and fourteen thousand two hundred and fifty-nine dollars and ninety-six cents. And that represents, if you go to page five, at the bottom there highlighted, just under eighteen percent present value savings, which is great savings. The Kansas Development Finance Authority has a policy that says if they can save at least three percent on their bonds, they want to consider refinancing or refunding their bonds. So this is, like I said, this is just under eighteen percent. It's a great opportunity to lower the interest rate and lower the cost to the county and its taxpayers. The rest of the report shows what the, what the payments you're paying today. They're at about fifty thousand dollars per year. And then the second to last page shows the bonds that we're refunding. As I said, there's about twenty years left. We wouldn't be extending the term at all. We'd, it would just, like I said, just paying off the old bond with the new bond, a new twenty-year bond at a lower interest rate. As I said, that old bond is at four-point-seven-five percent. And the, if I can find my page here, the true interest cost of the financing on the new bonds is just under two and a half percent. So we'd be lowering the interest rate from four-point-seven-five to two and a half percent. Any questions?
I have one that's kind of a generic question, Brett.
Okay.
The bond amounts recording, has somebody already bid on that and, and agreed to that amount? Or is this speculation that that's where they all bid?
This is speculation. We, we can't, we can't do anything until you approve us to do something first, so.
You're making it sound pretty assured there, so I was wondering if?
Well, I said estimated a lot. These are estimated amounts based on what our trading desk felt we could do a couple of weeks ago. The market's pretty similar today. It's actually just a little bit better. Rates have come down just a little bit.
I'm just giving you a bit, Tim.
Well, and getting to know Brett over the years, he's an optimist, so. No, I, just kidding. No, I, they, they've, they've been, even when it was George K. Baum, they've been pretty spot on with regard to their estimates.
And I will, unless there's any other questions.
Do you have anything, Glenn, do you have? Robert or Linda, do you have anything to offer? You or your financial team, you're the one that came up with this concept?
No, we're, we're really pleased to move forward with this. And we think it's something that the entire county fiscal committee reviewed and looked at during the listing process.
So at this point, we need a motion for the record?
Resolution.
I want, I want to explain something before you act. An issue this size, this is a pretty small issue in the grand scheme of things. We felt initially we'd like to go out as a private placement agent and try and privately place these bonds with one bank or one institution. We put out proposals to some of your local banks, maybe some regional banks, and see if they'd be interested in purchasing. And we'd just place it with one financial institution or one sophisticated investor. Usually on smaller issues, you get the best results. The costs, the costs are a little bit less. And sometimes the local banks want to help out the county. Twenty years is maybe a little bit long for some of the local banks. They may not want to tie up their money for that long. But we'd like to do that first. The resolution authorizes either way, either a private placement agent or an underwriter. Initially, we'd try and take proposals and do a private placement. If that doesn't work, we'd develop preliminary official statement and do it as a public offering, so.
So this, my motion is a, it's not a resolution?
It is a resolution.
Okay, we need a resolution number, then right into the record and a, and a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve Resolution twenty-one dash twenty-twenty-one to authorize offering of general obligation refunding bonds.
I'll second.
Motion second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, those opposed? Thank you, Brett.
I have one comment. I'd like to commend the staff for finding this little jewel, saved the taxpayers some money. I appreciate it.
And Lon?
Well, and I'm, I'm presuming that you are aware that one of our local banks has just, in the last month, become a part of a bigger bank in Wichita, which may give more validity to?
Absolutely. Absolutely. Yeah. Yeah, we will, we will definitely make sure they're aware.
American State Bank became a part of Equity Bank.
Oh, okay. Great.
Public traded and.
Yep. Yeah, definitely. Well, we'll get to work and probably come back at one of your meetings in January to explain the results. And the plan is, if everything goes to plan, we will, we're scheduled to close this issue on February first. That's when the old bonds will be paid off and the new bonds will be your obligation. So I plan to see you at a meeting in January.
All right. Thank you, Brett.
Thank you very much.
Okay, county administrator, ARPA options discussion?
All right.
Sure.
All right, thank you. Good morning again. Well, what you have before you is just a quick briefing on many of the county proposed projects for the ARPA funds, as we've discussed early on. And Trista had reported on the balance that was deposited within the county coffers back in, in the spring of approximately three-point-five million dollars. And at that point in time, we spoke with the commissioners about developing an internal list on qualified expenditures under the treasures guidelines that were out then and continue to come out throughout the entire process. So really what you see before you is a listing from, or a partial listing, prioritize top three, two or three listings of projects within the county operations for the funding of, through ARPA funds. And you'll be joined later on, approximately nine-thirty, I recall, with Jeff Stevens to talk a little bit more about some of the potential areas to invest the ARPA funds. Once again, this, this, the funding here is, as, as we received it, we've got a, we've had a lot more time to think through and determine how we can strategically put this. The other process was kind of a hurried up one, as you do recall, as well as the reporting aspect of it and documentation. All that is still in place, reporting and documentation, but it allows us a little bit more time to really think through how we can best serve this. On the next page, it talks a little bit about various monies that have come into the county to various entities, whether it's the cities, school districts, or the community college. And as you can tell, you know, we're probably somewhere between twenty-eight to thirty million dollars that has come into the community and being utilized in various ways, various manners by all the entities involved. As we move forward in priority list from the county, we looked at various, our sewer district, our infrastructures within the county, as that was one that was, that was targeted early on by the various treasury guidelines that, that allowed for improvements, investments in and so forth. So we looked at our own infrastructure on sewer district. County does have three sewer districts in, in various states. You have two that pump directly into the city system, and then you have a lagoon system as well. It's an estimated total improvements on this, getting with your public works department and with. and with your sewer department with, division within the public works department, meeting with, with their consultants that they used, and as well as a SMH, Slow Myron Hancock assistus in especially in upgrades to sewer district number three. And recall that that is one of the sewer, that is the sewer district that we're utilizing to, to put in approximately 70, 71 homes that will be within the city limits, but will utilize the district's infrastructure. So this next page identifies the various sewer districts by map, and you've seen this map as you approve the county budget, and it identifies the area in which it, in which it serves, as well as commercial properties and residential properties within that district that it serves. And as you can tell, there's about 180 each of commercial and residential properties that this sewer district provides services to. As the consultants went around with your public work staff and sewer district operators, they have identified various improvements to the lift stations within these, within these districts. For, by way of example, the sewer district one has approximately $520,000 of improvements needed to various lift stations and cleaning and, which, as they have reviewed the records with county administration, that very little has been done over the last 10 to 15 years in this regard, which normally there is a systematic approach to cleaning and cambering these, these systems and then doing the repairs thus, thus far for it. So this is just a sampling of things that the consultants have provided as insight and needs attention, which in the past, your annual budget has not provided necessary resources for. And in fact, for a couple of the sewer districts, they rely upon actually the, the sewer districts or the public works budget to help offset the cost of that. And as you can see in our last couple of budget processes, we've began transitioning more and more to where those sewer districts are a little bit more self-sustaining and less reliant on public works funding for, for their operations. So that's sewer district one. In essence, you see the grocery lifts, the pumps, check valves, base elbows and so forth. There's no upgrade needed in terms of the design of pump or its specifications, as it is sufficient to run the operations. It just is in need of replacement and updates of various things within that process. Sewer district two has a couple of commissioners probably know firsthand, has some various challenges, and this one here is probably has the most potential for expansion that we discuss later on in the presentation. This here has numerous pump stations, approximately five lift stations and two, two smaller pump stations. But this here, I think, is, is important to note as well, is that the population there is, is, is in essence, a few of them have their own sewer system, septic tank and lateral field. And it has been, for the most part, a little cost prohibitive to get those involved and connected to that sewer system and complete utilization of that sewer system. So what they'll have to rely upon in the future is either advanced systems as they replace it, or hopefully they have the land in place to replace a lateral field or whatever the case may be. So in this, we discuss not only the improvements to the lift stations and the cambering and the cleaning of lines and so forth, as well as generator backup, which as you know, has been a, a severe issue with all of our sewer district facilities. This one here also include dredging of the ponds, as we spoke with the consultants and the years in service of that pond. They strongly urge us to take advantage of the ARPA funds and do the dredging of that, that pond. There is no need to expand it and add another cell to that pond, but in essence, then they're, they're saying that that would provide additional life for that district and allow them to continue on well into the future without being in a reactionary mode. And then finally, sewer district number three. This one here, we spoke to you a few times. In fact, we're working with the city right now on the process of providing them information, data for a developer's agreement to put their first phase, which is 70 homes on that, on that first phase, which will tie into the, to the furthest east side of that, northeast side of that district. This, this specific sewer district, of course, the cost is about approximately $620,000. Would include some, some upgrades to the pumps that include resizing that specific pump on the northeast side, as it was undersized during the initial design of it. Getting with SMH reviewing the stats, they provided us with the specifics on new pump standards for that as well, and so that will be, that is included within this upgrade sewer district here. Once again, cleaning, cambering of lines, repairing anything that needs to be addressed, which your county sewer staff and public work staff are aware of, oh, a couple of areas that will need attention. And as you go through that cleaning process, well then, there's potentially more. In essence here, as we conclude on the sewer district upgrades, parts of it, will provide the reliability and the sanitary services for literally hundreds of your patrons within your county community. All in, you'll, you have over 500 individuals that are on your various sewer district lines and, and, you know, 180 commercial users as well. This additionally will allow for expansion of services for the city's development, housing development, that is just to the east of sewer district number three. And then for sewer district number two, it does allow us a look into the future of how we may be able to extend some of the lines in those areas that are, that do not have sewer service, that in the future can, those residents, whether they're there now or there in the future, will be able to connect to.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Before we move on, is your final about the sewer districts?
Yes.
Before we move on to the, the next item, with regard to the sewer district, and one just global comment, one of the issues that we've had in sewer district three for a number of years, part of it's the pump size or capabilities or whatever you want to call that, but part of it is abuse of the system by the residents in that system and what they're putting into the sewer. And it was interesting to me that on a Facebook post, the city's having the same issue that we are having in that sewer district, and they put it out there, you know, hey, please don't put these things in the sewer system. And so I thought it was maybe isolated to our sewer district. I was enlightened by the Facebook post to see that it was not only our sewer, sewer district, but also within the city. So I hope that residents will learn to not abuse the systems because it does shorten the life of these systems for sure.
It does, and I, if I can offer additional information in that regards, we did have our...
Comment, oh, but go ahead, yeah.
Well, we did work, your county staff did work with the pump rebuilder and designer and has added a, another feature that will help not fully mitigate, but partially mitigate those products that seem to be now being flushed down your system and so forth. So that, that is something that, that, that I think will assist in the future. In addition, as you saw, on each one of these areas, we have a shelved pump, which you don't have now, which in an essence then allows us to go ahead and make those replacements as a pump goes down, and they do go down, without having to shut down things and do a temporary pumping process potentially in that area or work just with one pump in that area. So we can keep, keep and maintain our operations up until we can get that other pump replaced or repaired.
Then I have two other questions. One is related to the pumps. I, you know, one of them, we were talking about six spares and, you know, because of the number of pumps and so forth, I, I get that. But say in our sewer district where there's one pump and we have one spare, say while they're repairing that first pump, something happens to the second, are these pumps going to be the same that we could share a, a spare from another sewer district if, if that ever became an issue?
The, the short answer is yes. The longer answer is that the, the reason for the number of six in the second sewer district, by way of example, is just because of the mere fact of the sizing of those pumps, they are not all the same. During this, during this process, we may look at trying to try, standardize it as long as it does not compromise what their purpose is.
Yeah, I, if we can do that, I think that would be beneficial to each of the districts. My last question is, yes, the first phase of that development is supposed to be 70 or 71 homes, up from 55, which they originally had thought it would be. And then there's another phase, maybe two phases after that. Are those subsequent phases, would they be hooking into the system and, as well? And if so, has that been taken into consideration?
The answer is no, they will not be hooking into sewer district number three, so they will be going through sewer district number one at that point in time.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
And that's predominantly a gravity feed.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
All right, so you...
Go right ahead.
Okay, and as you saw, in, in essence, then, the anticipated cost is, budgeted cost for those, $3.5 million for those improvements to your three sewer districts there. The second major project that we had before you that was discussed with emergency management and your public works department and your buildings and grounds department, your fairgrounds personnel, fair board, and representatives from CVB. And that is your main fairground facility and how it has been utilized during the pandemic throughout the last year, year and a half. As you recall, it's been, it was widely utilized, and we had assistance from various entities helping us during the pandemic, whether it was with the guards or, or air guards or whoever, whoever happened to be out there assisting and volunteering with us. And what they looked at specifically from the emergency management standpoint is truly trying to create a facility that becomes a potential shelter as well. And I know that this has been identified in some realms as being a potential shelter, but what we have found is that it lacks that year-round resiliency to be a true year-round shelter. So that's, that's really the take on the emergency management side on it, is, is how we can improve, make improvements to this facility as, as far as a shelter. Then it boils down to the utilization during emergencies, such as this pandemic that we went through. What would have made it a little bit better? And probably to no surprise to anybody here in this room is, is the HVAC system and, and the, and upgrades to the electrical and so on and so forth. So those are the things that we looked at as we moved forward in trying to identify how to make improvements. This one here has a couple benefits, one from a emergency services, public health standpoint, as well as a, an event generator as well. I do know that, that in regards to some of the events that have been, have tried to been, be booked, they stay away from certain times of the year because of the extremes and temperatures and so forth, and perhaps the ability or the inability of that facility to provide the comfort needed in essence to hold many of those major events. So things such as backup generators for the, for, for the emergency services, HVAC systems, upgrades, noise baffling, we had our first ever, for those that you attended, in-service day for the employees, and, and some of the feedback we, we received was that it was a little bit difficult in hearing because of that. We also get that in larger groups when they're addressing for various topics there in that area. So we look at baffling and padded walls and so forth, floor receptacles and, and electricity and internet access, IT improvements. That was a big topic and has been for the last couple of years in terms of trying to make improvements to that facility and, and hopefully making it a lot user-friendly and more widely used by those inside the community and those outside of the community. Expansion of storage for cost tables and chairs. One of the, one of the things that I do recall when Angie was here, that was a constant request of continued need for improvements. You have the ability to expand to the east and could actually double the size of your current storage by expanding to the east of where your current storage area is on that facility. So those, in essence, are, as a snapshot of some of the things that, that they've looked at to better utilize that facility, make it more resilient during emergency operations and more user-friendly and so forth during various events. Yes, sir?
I've spent my fair share of time in that building with Sandin's age, and the storage facility is way improved from where, it could be bigger, better than it was. Seems to me, I recall that the electrical service to that building is at its capacity. Is that, that service is definitely going to have to be expanded if we're going to air condition that building.
That is correct, or a separate service for that, absolutely.
Okay, there is, it is at its limit right now, is my understanding, is that...
According to what Rex said, yes, he believes that, that we would have to pull new service to that area to accommodate or split it in some form. Yes?
Are you, are you aware that that building is, was purposely built with the west being open so that wall could be taken out and the building expanded going westward?
Yes, I think you shared that during the last budgeting process, yes. Yeah. And, and I'm not certain that the structure itself in essence for events needed to be expanded, but the expansion of, for storage and so forth back to the east is what they're looking at. Yeah.
That is a Butler building.
Correct.
And, but we added to it, and the parts that were added were not Butler, however, it was made to work sorta.
[laughing]
It has some, it has some problems. So as you're aware, the thing is not watertight, concrete is breaking, so I don't know how far we want to go spending money on a building that's, what, 50 years old. Some point, maybe it makes more sense to take a look, is there an alternative to adding on to it, so...
Okay. Well, that's something that, that the commission can flesh out a little bit more. Once again, we did engage an awful lot of people outside of our bailiwick here to get their input and... to get their input and how to better utilize that facility and and really, uh they came up with, I thought, was some very good ideas on how to do that um moving into the future. Uh following this is various uh pictures of the area just by point of ref- reference, but it's anticipated that that facility, uh the improvements uh that were just mentioned were somewhere in that budget amount of one point five million. Um we did not pursue um, we looked at some of the historical data that um Public Works Works and Rex had um with this as they had looked in the past, apparently at um upgrade stage V A C system and trenching uh some of the concrete to put in um conduit into the uh ground to be utilized. So as you witnessed during the um in-service uh portion of it, um there were um various cables and wires running above ground that were being stumbled upon. That's just the way it is during events as well. So um we're trying to mitigate that liability as well. Any further questions on that project? Okay. Uh last major project that we had uh looked at really has to do with the um uh four main offices here within this facility, Appraiser Clerk Registered Deeds and Treasurers Offices, has to do with public access, safety, space separation, and so on. And so as we look at uh Appraiser's office, and I think we have a snapshot of of that, um we look at public asset ass- access here uh from the hallway um through a access window that would allow for up to three patrons to be served at that access window. That's something that uh uh we could open that window up as well as put in a rolling divider gate, so to speak, that rolls down and provides uh for for service to that area. And also then would reconfigure a couple of offices in there as that would take up a couple of spaces and then gener- uh also uh utilize one of the offices as a meeting room to assist in um uh various tax pair functions and appraisal functions within that facility. Uh overall, that's an estimated somewhere around seventy-five thousand dollars. Um Rex uh seems to feel that that may be something that uh county forces can assist in in opening that up a little bit, which could save some some dollars in that regards. Uh Clerk's Office is the next one that we looked at. And as you recall, just to the west of the Clerk's Office, that's where your uh oftentimes your early voting um is. That's also where the auditors are and so forth. And what we noticed during the uh shutdown and restrictions during the pandemic was that space was very precious, if you will, especially since there was a combination of uh elections at the same time as well. So uh we're uh it is being proposed as well then to uh provide that connectivity other than just the hallway to expand that Clerk's Office into that uh western um that western office down there. That way, they can provide the proper spacing for employees and for customer service and for elections to that. And I'll let uh Dory field any additional questions that you may have on that. Uh estimated anticipated costs on that is somewhere around one hundred thousand dollars approximately. Okay. Uh next one, Register of Deeds uh downstairs. Um as you're aware, the in it in in order to access the vault there in the Register of Deeds, uh you'll go through the employees' work area and so forth, and there is a need to to create that separation between uh clients in the work uh area. So uh we've worked with um prior Register of Deeds and coming up with a potential solution. We'll continue to work with uh new Register of Deeds on that solution, but what we're looking at is a direct access more to that vault so that it it does not encroach on employees' workspace. Uh once again, anticipated cost for that provides a little bit of safety security as well, approximately seventy-five thousand dollars. And then for the Treasurers Office, which is one that we looked at during the um um uh the prior funding that that the county received, uh just, we just could not pull everything together at that time to make those uh safety and service improvements. But what it entails in essence is to um redo the um workstations up in front, um as well as uh uh the spacing for those workstations um and uh provide some safety features within that area. Um in addition to that, uh that will allow for um little bit safer work environment and a better workflow, if you will, as uh that uh without a doubt is your busiest office within this facility and the most clients' contacts. Uh anticipated cost on that is approximately two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Any questions on those, as I just briefly talked about that, and then we can um, I think we may have Jeff Stevens perhaps on the line here as we try and move forward? Do we? Okay. So we also looked at numerous other things. We've had requests from outside agencies, Garden City Community College, which received over four million dollars, has requested additional funding to help their trades program. I have received a request from an individual uh at the for some potential funding for uh the um assistance restoration of the hotel downtown, and uh of course numerous uh uh potential daycare uh requests. We had our office contact about a, oh, twenty-plus uh daycares with about half the respondents. Seems like the biggest uh from what their query is, the biggest need seemed to be in that, up to eighteen-month uh age group. And uh at least two of the commissioners has remarked that they're aware that that seems to be the the niche as well. But I I'll uh if if Jeff is on online here, we can pull him in and let him talk a little bit more about about that aspect of it, if you don't mind.
All right.
Gabby?
You there, Jeff?
Yep, Jeff Stevens. Good morning, Jeff.
Good morning.
Good morning. How is everybody?
Oh, good.
Suit and tie on, he looks kind of official.
Huh.
You know, I haven't seen you all in a while, so I I wanted to make sure that I'm dressed up appropriately.
Things going well in New Jersey?
Things are. Uh you know, things are, things are well.
Good, good.
How's everybody there?
We're still a-going.
Yeah, yeah. We're few but whiny.
The floor is yours, Jeff.
Okay. So, you know, I I, as Robert indicated, there's been some significant interest in childcare, especially with what we were able to do with some of Spark Monday. Wanted to really dive down deep into childcare and understand uh some of the pieces that we may want to think about. Uh so kind of put together a quick slide deck for y'all and and happy to take any questions afterward. Uh childcare, as we we saw with Spark, is is a big issue. You know, it's actually a national issue. Uh you know, as as we dug in deep, it's, you know, it's a textbook example of roaming market. You know, it's a it's a biggest challenge. Seventy percent of our of the respondents during the Spark survey indicated that childcare is the biggest concern during COVID nineteen. You know, Fiddy County is actually uh within one of the better ranges, uh still not, you know, you want to be in this uh seafoam green uh area, but you're in the gray, you know, eleven to twenty kids, children per one childcare opening, uh and that you can see. Comparatively, you're doing pretty well to the neighbors except for community and need. Um but you know, the everybody else is is lower down on the spectrum. One of the biggest things to understand the problem, though, is we dug into the childcare aware of Kansas point-in-time data, and what, you know, what really highlights here is only twenty-six percent of your desired cap- capacity means potential demand. And we'll talk about that in a second. Um yeah, but you'll see all these numbers here. It's kind of fluctuated, but stayed around that, you know, fifty-nine, sixty range uh for your licensed facilities. And you know, two of the things to make note of is, you know, the the number of kids enrolled, the desired capacity, and then the licensed capacity. And really, when I looked at some of these numbers, you know, one of the the twenty-six percent was the first one that jumped out at me. Uh so got on the phone with childcare aware and trying to understand their data a little bit. That twenty-six percent, the way they did it is they looked at all of the children potentially needing care and how many were enrolled. So, for example, in my family, my wife has said, I want to stay home and raise our kids. Um but my two, you know, my kids don't need childcare. But then my two kids, because they're in that age range, would have been included in the state if I was in Fiddy County. You know, one of the most surprising things to me was, you know, kind of the enrolled versus desired and licensed capacity. So why is the delta between seven fifty-three enrolled and the desired capacity of eight twelve? You know, where are those, you know, just about sixty children? Where are those spots? And why are, why is that not over that eight, twelve, or even just more towards that licensed capacity? So as Robert said, you know, county staff called uh the different providers and try and did some informal outreach uh to to see what was going on. The two childcare centers, they had no spots for that, you know, zero to eighteen months, you know, those those infants, you know, and newborns. But there was over twenty spots for eighteen-month plus. There was some home daycares did have some spots uh for then zero to eighteen months, and there are three spots for over eighteen months. Um but that's how the eight eight individuals uh contacted. So there's some spots available. It's not to the capacity that I think anybody was hoping for, but really what was glad, most glad was that zero to eighteen months. So trying to understand why, you know, why is that age range a problem, and what can we do about it? So first, you know, infants must be staffed at a higher ratio and have sugar room partners. The economics are a challenge, you know, not only uh with Infiniti County, but also nationally. The younger the child, you know, the the more expensive the care is, you know. So the economics are are a problem. And you know, they may need additional, you know, the the ones that we did speak to, uh additional staff and equipment, you know, if it was there, they could support more. Uh so that was one of the things. Um staff recruitment and retention was a big deal as well. That kind of got highlighted. One of the facilities had, you know, and we had six vacancies, and it only had one application in the last three months. So we kind of tried to understand why that was a little bit, you know, the pay is low, you know, starting between seven dollars and fifty cents and twelve dollars an hour. And when you do an area wage comparison, I called some fast food businesses within uh within Garden City, you know, and they all indicated starting wages between nine and thirteen dollars an hour. Uh big box retail up is within the area. Everybody was oh, you know, at fifteen dollars, and a lot of people are hiring for the, you know, seasonal surge, and we're going to try and retain people after that. You know, as I I mentioned, the pricing, uh you know, parents are used to spending between a hundred and fifty, a hundred and seventy a week. Uh if you try to increase that, you may get priced up. And then some of the changes in state regulations uh over the years have been a bit of a challenge. Uh you know, the the state is saying that those regulations need to change and need to be updated with the times. Uh but it's, it definitely did have a shock that still reverberating through the childcare industry. Really, though, when we think about, okay, great, our problems are, you know, economics, staffing, um you know, lack of those infant slots, how do we solve that? You know, really, there's no cookie cutter answer. And there's no, you know, do this, do that. Um but I think the recommendation, kind of doing all of that research, if we add substantially more slots, we're not going to necessarily have the workforce to be able to support that. The existing childcare uh community has capacity available, um but it's a little bit of a mismatch. So kind of short term, the recommendation that that we came up with is provide grants for equipment training and staff retention with existing providers. You know, that could involve subsizing pay of the existing uh providers while they work to build up a gap, you know, incentivizing and, you know, supporting the training of new hires. Uh you know, a lot of the, we're seeing all the time, hey, come apply uh to this job, and you get uh a hundred dollars for, you know, as a sign-on bonus, or five hundred dollars as a sign-on bonus. Uh those are things, you know, and if you address that newborn gap and build, you know, kind of deal with some of the economics there, then you could potentially prime the pump to building more daycare in the future. Uh you know, you monitor state and federal developments. There was childcare, two rounds of childcare sustain in Gray. I'm more wondering if there's a, you know, third round. The uh, you know, the infrastructure bill passed on the federal level, but the Build Back Better Act is still up in the air. It may or may not pass. If it does pass, there's four hundred billion dollars there for universal pre-k and childcare. You know, so it would be, you know, it's one of those things that the outcome of that bill is very murky in the moment, uh but there's such a significant investment there in childcare that I, you know, I don't know if I'd recommend you to make a really significant investment in childcare right in the beginning, outside of addressing those short-term gaps throughout. And then longer term, you you you're back to full capacity. You know, there's you have potential partnerships with local employers, uh you know, and sense of new development, once that local capacity is fully leveraged, and and trying to find ways working in concert with the providers they have uh to create kind of a long-term sustainable model within the area. I I think there's been an excellent focus on this, you know, as an economic development issue, and it and it is going to be. So the more we can address the short-term issues while some of the long-term pieces come into play as it relates to what's the state doing, what's the federal government doing, I think would be very, very beneficial. With that, just kind of wondering of, around to questions as it relates to kind of the recommendation.
Okay, questions, comments? Um observation from our personal standpoint with my grandchildren, um for example, with the newborn, we could take the newborn, she's with a small home operation, but we don't have slot for the two-year-old. And it's not going to work to have a child go here and a child go there. You know, I'm trying to say logistics doesn't work. And then the then the issue of uh how much can they get away with charging? You know, that, you know, I think some of the things that in calling around, we found was that there seemed to be more um availability, if you will, um uh for those two and above. And so the uniqueness of being able to find some of s- uh space for newborn up to eighteen months seems to seem to be a challenge and feedback from a lot of them, even the uh even the facility across from the uh college there. And their struggles seem to be in in being able to pay sufficiently for uh for for help to take on additional clients. Anything else?
Jeff, does your study um talk about the uh twenty-four-hour-day type services that some of our employers need?
Yeah, that was, that was one thing that we didn't um, we talked about anecdotally. Uh so, you know, county staff and I did talk about that pretty substantially. And that's really where that partnership of local employers comes into their place. Uh you know, Tyson, for example, you know, if we can partner with them and find a solution that works that puts, you you know, you don't want to have folks have to go to the across town to really support that twenty-four hours. If you can locate something there, right near the plant or, you know, in proximity, you know, along the way, that that may be the best way to go. Uh so really, that that's one of those things that's a longer-term uh piece, Commissioner, and and I think that's a great viable solution that we have to look into.
Vaughn, you have anything to add?
Well, I don't think there's anything, I don't think I've seen anything new uh to what I've already understood. Lower wages, regulations, uh not enough slots for the younger kids and so forth. You've just simply highlighted and and amplified uh some of the things that I felt like I already had known about the childcare issue in our county.
And Commissioner Fishy, I think, you know, what we want to, I think, by highlighting them, you know, what you're saying, okay, now let's solve, let's create a program that solves. a program that solves your endeavors to solve those short-term pieces while working long-term.
Yeah, and I caught that drift, yes.
Clearly, the, the monies that are going to be needed to cover this, this portion that Jeff's talking about, need to come out of the appropriation we received next June or July, correct? I mean, the other is, if, if we follow through on the sewer districts, it's committed.
Correct. I think you'll need those for, to make those improvements and so forth. And once again, I think Jeff may have identified additional outside sources for, for this as well. Is that correct, Jeff?
Yeah, they, the, you know, childcare grants that are going to come from the state are a possibility, you know, and the Build Back Veteran Act could be another piece. There are certain, you know, we'll have to, to figure out how we drive forward if, you know, if the commission says, hey, let's, let's go try and solve these short-term issues. We'll have to, you know, look at some of those funding and potentially try to log with the state a little bit, too.
Okay, anything else?
Clarification on my point, Robert. My rough math says after your presentation, there's approximately a million and a half left over for community projects.
Yeah, approximately, yeah. Depending on what, if any overruns. And once again, on sewer district true improvements did not necessarily include expand, the expansion mechanism within there. So, and you can, and you can allocate, you know, I've studied some of the other local units of governance across the state, and they'll allocate a certain dollar amount specifically geared towards a, a specific effort. And that's something that perhaps this commission would like to focus on, whether it's a quarter million, a half a million, three quarters of a million, whatever that magical number happens to be. And then we can, you know, set aside those funds and continue on. The grocery list in essence, so to speak, that I presented to you was not a finite list. There was additional things there, but the ones that I presented to you were in essence the, the top three categories that would provide perhaps some of the best in the, of the needed improvements that your county directors and outside individuals have participated in looking at.
Lon?
Mr. Chairman, so I guess right now we're, we're talking about not just the childcare, but all of the presentation. Am I correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Because I, I, I support some internal improvements, childcare being an outside need that we have in our county and so forth. My question is this, and, and it's to Robert and to Jeff. We had talked and heard conversations about our health building and EMS building and, and so forth, and there were questions on whether or not that would qualify through Treasury's guidelines and so forth. And I didn't see anything referenced in the presentation this morning about that. However, I see that, personally, I see that as, as a very, fairly important need within our county going forward. So, Robert, if you want to start, or Jeff wants to add in, jump in?
I'll, I'll start and let, allow Jeff to go ahead and join in on this, but as you are aware, we, we passed that quarter percent sales tax for, for just that specific purpose. But in addition to that, the last reading that I did on the Treasury guidelines was that expansion seemed to perhaps be allowed, but as far as new, I think that was the question. And Jeff, that's where I'm going to allow you to jump in and tell me any new.
Yeah, so building something new was going to be challenging, given the Treasury guidelines as it relates to that. It's something that we looked into in a very detailed way, but, you know, as the interim final rule is bringing at the moment, that is not going to be an eligible spend. It, you know, we, we will, you know, it's something we can continue monitoring, but at this point, we won't be able to, to recommend it because it just may not be eligible.
So we will have to depend on the sales tax for that.
Correct.
Project, yeah, yeah.
Correct.
Yes, Bob?
Bob Kreitzer, Concerned Citizen. Jeff has outlined all kinds of things that could happen in future deals. I think this next week, the president's going to sign some kind of a deal called infrastructure. Wouldn't all of this sewer district money be able to qualify, even if half of it was able to qualify? This other one was American Recovery Program, and it was about helping our community. This sounded like, what can I get off of Robert's wish list? Somewhere in between, there's got to be a balance. Let's think about our community.
So what would you have us spend that money on to help the community that we're?
Well, I, I really respect, Jeff is an expert, he's got to be. He's out of town, he's got a tie on, and I assume he's got a briefcase. But I don't believe half of the numbers that he read on childcare, not even close. And I think if you're going to listen to an expert on childcare, maybe you listen to your economic development director who happens to be on the state level, working with the state, solving the crisis that we have in daycare, and maybe get her perspective and let her interplay with Jeff, because he's an expert and so is she, but she's from here. But let's try to listen and hear both sides. Thanks.
I believe they've been in conversation together, so.
No, 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 no. These, these guys have been, but not the people who know childcare.
I'm going to speak to the elephant in the room. And, and listen, please, this is not to be a personal thing, but, but Bob, you, you have a facility that's dedicated in your purchase to daycare.
It is.
And I think without reading between the lines here, you'd like some, some money appropriated to that building.
Well, there's money appropriated toward that building, and it will become a daycare center, whether you give any money or not. I think what we will find is that some of us stood up two years ago when we had an economic situation with daycare, and we've invested over a million dollars. I'd like some of it back.
I applaud you for that.
I'm sorry?
I applaud you for your investment.
Well, and, and I'd like some back, but whether we get any of that money from you, we've got some from the city. They differ from this expert. We're going to lease it to them, and we'll eat that, but we're going to have childcare one way or the other. I just don't want to listen to this kind of information that is so wrong for our community.
You, you stated your opinion.
All right.
We appreciate that, so. The, the decisions are not being made today. I want to see a board of five of us making this decision, not three with two missing. So we have more discussion to, to come forward, but this is a, if you will, an opening look at where, where we could go. So, Lana?
Commissioner Jones, I'm sorry to interrupt you. This information wasn't in the packet. Is this information that can be shared so that we can look through those numbers as well?
Here.
Thank you.
We just got it this morning, too, so it wasn't in our packet.
So this is just the childcare side?
This is the PowerPoint he just did.
Okay, and the other information about the sewer districts and stuff, do you guys have that one?
I'll find another one for me.
I hope so. Thank you.
And I would encourage that Jeff and Lana have some kind of a, of a dialogue together so that we don't have hard feelings here, that we can surely come out of this thing win-win. So, anything else, Jeff?
No, absolutely will, will do that, Commissioner. One of the things that I will mention is that, you know, the numbers that are quoted here came direct from Childcare Aware, and, you know, from actually some of Lana's past quotes in the, in the media.
Okay, okay. Anything else, either from anybody? Jeff, thank you.
Thank you.
And we'll let you sign off and catch you down the road here somewhere. Okay? Moving right along. I guess we're up to the point of a county administrator's report.
All righty, well, as you saw, many of the things on the agenda were geared towards what I or my office is doing. Still have the information within the city's court on the draft developers' agreement for sewer district number three in that first phase of Sunset Terrace. So we're standing by for that and.
Just quickly, I'm sorry for interrupting, but so they have not set another hearing date for that RHID?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
And then the other one will be in the development of a, another developers' agreement for Country Acres, I believe is the proper name of it. So we'll be working on that project as well coming up.
That's it.
Linda?
So upcoming, you should be getting updated usage agreement for the Fairgrounds facility. Stephanie and I have been working on that, trying to update that for 2022. We're getting under the wire because I know she's trying to start doing rentals into January and February, so hopefully we'll get that to you at the next meeting. The county treasurer's office has also given me tax sale information, so that should be, that'll be ongoing and upcoming for me. And then, of course, Northwest Industrial District is still on my radar. Hopefully, we'll get that at the next meeting.
All right, thank you. Lon?
I really don't have much to report, but I do want to compliment the community, and particularly Leonard Hitz on the banquet that he had on Friday. I was not able to attend, but I've heard very good reports. And then the Veterans Day banquet on Saturday. I appreciate, and the parade, I had a good report on the parade when I talked to someone at church yesterday. So I really want to compliment our community for applauding veterans and their families through this last week and through Veterans Day. That's what America is all about, and I think our community did its part in, in that celebration. So I, I appreciate that. But I did not have any particular meetings or anything. The one note that I will make of, on a political perspective, because I know if Bill were here, he would mention this, and that is Wednesday evening is the district replacement convention for Russ Jennings' house seat, and the precinct people from Hamilton, Kearney, and part of Fenny, part of Haskell, and part of Grant will make that selection. Greeley County has no precinct people for that process, so it's going to be an interesting evening and interesting process, and then that name will be submitted to the governor.
And there are sixty-five precinct committee people in a room in that, in that venue for about a hundred, so it's going to be.
Six, there's potentially sixty-three to sixty-five. I can't remember the exact number, but some of them may carry proxies, some of them may not be able to be there. But yes, that's the potential of delegates.
Right, okay. Anything else, Lon?
Nope.
Well, you ran out of energy here before you run.
Yeah, well, I didn't want Dwayne to start his stopwatch again, so they just.
Okay. Dwayne?
I was out of town most of the week, so I have no official report, no meetings that I attended.
None at all, huh? Well, I have a handful, I'll go through them quickly. The 2017 sales tax meeting actually happened two weeks ago, and I think we've touched on it because at our canvas, the meeting, when we canvassed the ballots, then Skyler kind of addressed the EMS portion of the fire station, so I won't go any further there. I did attend the, the Fenny County Historical Society's Pioneer Family Banquet, and that honored two outstanding families, the Keith Downer family, if you will, who have been here for ever, if you will, and a more recent family that moved to the county, that would be the Ryfogle family. And it was interesting to see a ninety-two-year-old Mrs. Ryfogle with all of the fire and the, I mean, she is a sharp little old lady, and you just have to love her. And then Hank kind of concluded their, their service. When he came here, he spoke no English, he was starting the fourth grade. They enrolled him, and I think at Alta Brown, and, and this is how you taught English as a second language back then. They put Hank on the back row with about four guys like Lynn Dynas, and he named some others, and he said in two weeks, he could speak English. And if you sit and listen to Hank, he doesn't have any accent at all. He's done a remarkable job. So that's, that was a fun evening. We then, of course, canvassed our election, and, and then the Health Department Director interview, are you going to report on that today?
Actually, I was not until, not until it gets a little bit.
Okay. So I won't report that we had interviews for Health Department Director, so disregard that. The parade, I, we, I was, like Lon, very much impressed. They had, I don't know how many entries, but very nice parade. And then Saturday night, I attended the American Legion Banquet with all of the, the guest speakers. Unfortunately, their building does not have great acoustics, so a little tough understanding exactly what was being said, but, but it, they were very entertaining speakers. And I have to tell one of the inside stories. One of the speakers had been here as a chamber banquet speaker. He came back, he kind of likes Fenny County, but he was telling about, he was in the White House on September eleventh, two thousand and one, and assigned to Vice President Cheney. And the clear the skies out, but lo and behold, on the radar, aircraft radar, there's one airplane flying in Texas near the George Bush ranch. And they think, boy, this, this guy has got it in for the, going to do damage down there, so they send up a couple F-16s. You soon find this lone airplane, a guy by the name of Bubba or whatever spraying a corn crop with his spray plane, not knowing that you're supposed to empty the skies, but soon he had a couple F-16s right beside him, and, and he was encouraged to land the airplane. So there was some lighthearted stuff that went on that day, even though it was very serious, and we found that here in our response. A whole lot of serious concern, but a lot of lighthearted memories made. So, that said, we, we have some meetings to cover for Larry. Do you want to cover anything else before we conclude for the day?
No, that should be it. I believe we have a Chamber Breakfast Wednesday, is that correct?
Okay, and our next meeting is scheduled at eight thirty a.m. on December sixth, so until then, I guess we are adjourned. Is that correct?